It is now 7:30, and I would like to call the meeting of the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission, regular meeting to order August 23, 2016. Let the record show that Commissioner Cecil Pierce is absent this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of July 26, 2016 minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from June 28, 2016.
I second the motion.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I just need to make a correction. It should have been July 26, 2016.
July 26?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Let the record show that it's July 26, 2016. The next item on the agenda, as is with every meeting we have, is the time set aside for public comment. The Planning Commission will accept comment for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. Do I have anyone that would like to take the podium at this time? Having none, I'll close this part of the meeting. Next item is going to be brought about by Cack Mac. It's the Code Amendments, Time Extensions for Plats. Senior Planner, Cack, come back.
Good evening. So this is the Code Amendments for extensions of time limits for filing of final plats and extension of preliminary plats, validity of preliminary plats. So I shared some information with the Commission at the last meeting, at the last public meeting, on kind of the general House bills that impacted this change, and they've changed it multiple times. And so we drafted a code and included in your packet. But just for the people watching at home, for the public hearing purposes, I'm going to run through the same presentation real quick, just so that we can have the information up there, the Commission can get familiar with it, and then I'll briefly discuss the two code sections that we are amending in our municipal code to reflect those changes, and then we can discuss those further. So last time, our clicker wasn't working real well, and I hope this time it's all good. So the plat extensions reside in RCW 5817140. It sets the time period for final plats and preliminary plat. The time limit was set at five years, and it still is kind of the standard. But during the down economical period, the legislature made some changes to extend that time. They did one in 2010, 2012, and 2013, so they made three changes. And the changes extended the filing periods from seven, nine, and 10 years. The time periods were kind of, they wrote these changes in the different years with different slight modifications to the rules, which the time limit is different for a preliminary plat that is within the shoreline jurisdiction, and the time limit is different for plats that are not in shoreline jurisdiction. So some of the changes kind of made that distinction. And they also changed the time periods for the final plat vesting. So those were some of the changes that were addressed through these House bills. So in order to kind of understand what these extensions mean and where they would fit into the code, I think it's kind of critical to understand how the plating process works. And that way, we'll understand what's in our code and what we can, and how we can change it. So a preliminary plat process starts with the application. Once it's determined to be complete, it goes for internal staff review, and then, once it's ready for approval, it comes forward to the Planning Commission at a public hearing, and then go through the approvals of Planning Commission and City Council. So once the preliminary plat is approved, then the applicant has two kind of choices, two methodologies on how they want to get to final plat. And one is to drop civil plans, go into the construction drawings, and have that approved, and then they go out and they construct the improvements, and then they come in and file a final plat application, which then comes, I think the final plat comes through Planning Commission and City Council. And that period of construction, all the civil plans and so on, that period is what the extension will be related to. And the vesting then applies after the final plat is approved. The second way that they can do it is they can post a bond for all the improvements that they are going to do, and then they can file a final plat and start selling lots. And then by selling lots, then they can get the necessary funding to build the infrastructure. And some jurisdictions, or some developers choose that process as well. So the time extension then would apply to that timeframe. So if, and if a developer files a preliminary plat, gets it approved, and then for five years, we don't hear anything from them because they're either trying to get funding or something like that to maybe post a bond, that time extension is, you know, normally five years, and that has been extended now to seven, or nine, or 10 years, depending on where the location is. And so then after that, they come with the civil plans, and they do the construction, and then they do the final inspection. And that kind of determines kind of the vesting period for the land uses that are going to go into the final plat. So that is the kind of the process that is available, generally the two choices that are available for development. So, let's see, something's not working. Okay. So the code language is basically the House bills extended the preliminary plat that's, any preliminary plat approved before January 1, 2008, and it's not within the shoreline jurisdiction, the time period has been extended to 10 years. For preliminary plats that are approved before January 1, 2015, and within a shoreline jurisdiction, the time period is seven years. And then the preliminary plat approved after January 1, 2015, regardless of where it's located, goes back to that five-year time period. So it just kind of covers the timeframe to give the developers and applicants the time to recover from that down economy that we had. So that's mainly the time period shift. And they did similarly for the final plat and the vesting. So where does this fit into our code? So our code has two sections that deal with this. One is in the preliminary plat section. We have a small section called Effective Approval. It basically says how long your preliminary plat's approved. And the language in there is really giving an applicant the time to construct those improvements after the preliminary plat is approved and before they can come in for final plats. So that's how our language is written. So we, the Code Amendments, that is included in your packet, so if you can, if you see the text amendments, we kind of extended the construction period for those to match the timeframe of 10 years and seven years based on the change. Now, we didn't do anything about the five years because that language is already there in the text previous. So if you don't fit in under those two conditions, the time period is five years, which is what the state law is, and we left that portion of it. So that's the change in 212080. And then there's another section in the final plat, 2140020, which talks about when, how long do you have to submit a final plat? And that kind of is the same thing of addressing the validity of the final plat. And so we added the language in there for the 10 and seven years, similar to that of the preliminary plat. Again, there, the standing timeline is five years, but if you fit under those two criterias of the dates, then it's 10 and seven. We also took some language out regarding, you know, what are the subdivision requirements that a plat would have to follow based on the approval and based on when they come in for final plat? There's some time periods that go by, and we could update codes, and we could change codes. So the question is, when this time passes, what is the code that applies to these developments? Because they may have changed. The courts have basically kind of answered that question, and they've said that the preliminary plat, when it comes in for an application, the rules that are in place at that time is what they're vested under, which kind of makes sense because you're reviewing the preliminary plat under a certain set of codes. They designed it to those codes, and therefore, they should just build as per those codes. So they get vested under that. So basically, when a plat comes for extension, we can't change the rules on them, especially on a final plat, when a plat's already, preliminary plat's already done. When they come for a final plat extension, we can't say, you got to do it with the rules in effect now, because it was never designed to do that, and that kind of changes the ball game for them as well. But the courts have answered that. So we're taking that language out, because I don't think that we can impose the newest conditions on them when they come in for the final plat. And we've also added some language in that section to just reflect the RCWs for the vesting rights for plats. We don't know if that'll change, or if they'll change that, and we just thought, let's just refer to the RCWs on that. Therefore, if they change it, we don't have to change it here again. So we kind of referred, because when the seven years and 10 years on the preliminary plats, if you really think about it, that time will expire here pretty soon, given when the plats are there. So they won't be in effect after a certain period of time. And this, we just refer to the RCWs, so that they change it, it affects us too, and we don't have to make the changes. So that, in a nutshell, is the Code Amendments that reflect the changes in the state law. So if you have any questions about the Code Amendments, be happy to answer any concerns or issues.
Shall we open the public hearing?
Yes.
This time? I'd like to open the public hearing and take comment from the Commissioners and anyone else in the audience.
I've got a question about the Shoreline Management Act. Do we have any plats in the city limits in the Shoreline Management Act that that applies to?
I don't think we do. Yeah.
Thank you.
We have plats within the, we have plats within the shoreline jurisdiction, but we wouldn't have any plats that are undeveloped that this would apply to.
Yes, that's my point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Anyone in the audience care to address?
Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak just for a few moments. My name's Brian Gentry. I'm with Land and Gentry Homes. We're a home builder and community developer here in the area, and I've had an opportunity to build a number of homes here in the city, and develop a number of neighborhoods here in the city of Oak Harbor, and it's been a great city to work in over the years. And unfortunately, right now, we're not working here, very much, given just the fact we've kind of built through several of our neighborhoods. But I have been working closely with one property owner that has an expired plat, I already said not expired plat, but has a subdivision that had an extension on it, and we saw some of these challenges of trying to go ahead and get the project started again. We had an extended, we had an approved preliminary plat, but yet, some of this code language that required bringing it up to current standards was a little bit onerous, and not typical of what we see in our practice in other jurisdictions. And so I really appreciate Director Powers being willing to kind of bring this forward and work with staff to come up with some resolutions to deal with this and make the code language consistent with what we're seeing some of the vesting being. I know certainly it means a lot to the property owners that have these properties that do have subdivisions on them, approved land uses that have not been, that they've not had an ability to complete. I think it'll make a pretty clear, pretty clear and clean process for building, I know at least the particular subdivision we're working with, I think it will have an opportunity to complete that potentially. So anyway, I just want to say thank you to staff, and thank you to the Commission for considering this. I think it'll, I think it'll be, and there's not, there's not a lot of subdivisions out there that are like that, but there are a few, and I think it's important to find a way just to keep it clear. You know, certainly, I find that land use is really important, have a really clean and clear, consistent process, and I think this will help make Oak Harbor's code a lot more clean and consistent, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I do have another question. What happens to those folks who own plats that don't get them completed within these timeframes?
So if they don't get it complete, then the plat expires, and they would have to redo the plat. And then, when they bring in a new preliminary plat, then it will have to follow the current rules.
Okay.
There's no extension provided, other than what's laid out in the code?
Um, current.
That's a done deal, basically?
Yes. I mean, we're doing the maximum that the state code allows. And so we, I think, as Brian said, there's maybe a couple of plats out there, but there's not too many that will kind of fall into this, which is, this will, this will help what's out there immensely, but.
So we're talking about plats that haven't expired yet?
Yeah.
If, according to these new?
According to these new rules, we've given, yeah, yes.
Then I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of draft ordinance number 1782 to the City Council.
I second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The last item on our agenda this evening is Low-Impact Development. It's a public meeting, and Dennis LaFever, Senior Planner, will lead us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, good evening. What I'd like to do tonight is, again, bring Low-Impact Development and that major effort that we've been working on for several months back before you. What I'd like to talk about tonight is our process and kind of how we're aligning with the Department of Ecology's requirements for Phase II cities under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permitting that the city of Oak Harbor is required to do. Through the course of the years and the issuance of the permit, Low-Impact Development has taken a higher profile in each one of the permits. And in fact, the 2013 permit has required that the Phase II jurisdictions review, revise, and make effective Code Amendments to incorporate and require Low-Impact Development best management practices and principles as the preferred method for stormwater management in our city. So that effort has begun back in January. Brad Gluth, my co-manager on this project, made a presentation to you on the various best management practices that we are looking at incorporating into the code. These best management practices have been tested, but haven't been really tried through time as far as long-term maintenance and effective cost. So we're trying to flesh out some of those issues. But again, what we are using as a guide was prepared by the Department of Ecology. It's called their toolkit, and they prescribe that we undergo and implement six various steps in this process. So what I'd like to do is just briefly kind of work through the steps that we have accomplished to date. Step number one is shown in your packet, is assemble the project team. We pulled together management staff and considered them basically a core team. We had management personnel from Development Services, the legal department, administrative, and Public Works to kind of provide staff some guidance on how to proceed and how to establish some of the other groups that we would be working with through the course of the months to not only bring this to their attention, that this is coming down the road, but also to get their feedback as to how that might affect their jurisdictions or their districts or their agencies that they represent. So the staff, Brad and myself, we assembled what we called an external team. We had representation on that team from the school district, Skagit Island County Builders' Association, and?
SICPA.
SICPA, yeah. We had the Conservation District represented. We had a local engineer. We had a local Realtor represented on this group. And we basically walked through what we are looking at as far as the general topics, which were defined in that toolkit, and also asked for their feedback as to how certain aspects of implementing Low-Impact Development would affect their jurisdiction or their school districts, for instance. So we got that input. Through the course of about five meetings, we began that in March. We just concluded our fifth meeting about a month or so ago. We'll use that input into our code amendment. We also established an internal team, which consisted of staff that deal with stormwater management on a daily basis. We had folks that primarily resided in Public Works. They deal with garbage pickup, operation of large vehicles, emergency services. We had the stormwater inspector as part of this internal group. We had more planning staff involved in this, the building official, to get their input and feedback as to how this would affect their responsibilities. So that basically satisfied step one, as far as assembling of the project team, in our minds anyways. Step two, understand the general topics to address. Well, as I mentioned, the general topics, which I have included in the staff report, were prescribed by the Department of Ecology. They not only did general topics, they also did subtopics, and also listed some considerations under those subtopics, which are all part of your attachment, one of the packet, which kind of gave us, as a jurisdiction, some direction as to what they are looking for to look at in our code and revise, if necessary, those sections of our code. So we did that with all of those groups, so that we all had a basic understanding of what those 12 general topics were, and then the repercussions of those topics. So we moved into step three, which we kind of did in parallel with setting up those meetings with the internal and external groups. We did a lot of work on reviewing our existing documents, which are listed, again, in your, in the staff report. We looked at the comp plan. We looked at the shoreline master program. We obviously reviewed our municipal code, design standards, the water systems plan, sewage plan, road design standards, to see where we had implemented or incorporated Low-Impact Development. And then what we did was take those sections of regulation and plug those into the general topics, subtopics, and considerations to say, well, yeah, we have this in code, and it satisfies this consideration. We don't need to do anything else unless it hasn't functioned for us, and we need to do some tweaking on that. So we've completed that part, and now where we are is basically in step four, where we're starting to look for what they considered the gap analysis. Where in our code do we not address those specific subtopics and considerations that the Department of Ecology has identified? So we, basically, we, being Brad, myself, are taking blocks of time on a fairly regular basis and locking ourselves in our office and walking through each of these considerations, and then the codes that we have in place, taking the input that we had from the core group, the internal and external groups, and trying to come up with areas that we need to adjust in our code so that we can meet what is required for this LID project. Step five, of course, is going to be forthcoming in the next couple of months. I think we have a placeholder on the September Planning Commission meeting to maybe start discussing potentially some of the amendments that we're looking at in relation to the general topics, and then also bring it back again, probably in your October meeting, for more discussion. We'll probably need at least a couple of meetings, and we may even look at a workshop to further discuss some of these Code Amendments, and then take it forth, as we normally do with the code process, upon your recommendation to the City Council. This all needs to be done before the end of the year, as prescribed by the permit. But I feel pretty confident that we're on course and on task to meet that deadline. And then, of course, it's the ensure successful implementation. Well, we will see how that one works. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, one size does not fit all, and this is a very difficult subject to get our arms around, not only from prescribing it to be constructed in new developments, but also how it's going to be maintained on a long-term basis. So there's some real meaty issues that we'll have to work through and resolve in the remaining months of this year, but I feel confident that we'll be able to do that. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring this forth again, bring this to your, fern of your mind, because it's going to be in the fern of your mind for the next few months, but I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
You know, as I'm looking through this toolkit and this series of questions, you know, it seems to really encourage, basically, minimum of paving is one of the features. You know, and we have a couple of neighborhoods in Oak Harbor right now that have that, and unfortunately, they're not very livable. You know, because we don't have the mass transit that a lot of cities have, and we don't even have a particularly good sidewalk network, you know, when you build houses that are close to the street and you have shared driveways and narrow streets, you end up forcing a lot of cars onto the street to park, and without sidewalks, people are walking in the street, and it creates conflicts, and it doesn't create a comfortable, livable neighborhood when you drive down the street and all you see is cars everywhere. You know, you don't even have places for kids to play, really. And I'm just concerned that the, you know, Department of Ecology is driving factors that really affect livability, and as I look through your checklist of things that, you know, you guys are looking at, they're all very quantifiable, you know, can trash trucks get down the roads? Can the fire trucks get down the roads? You know, can the utilities fit, all those things? But how do we bring into account the fact that, you know, we need to live in these neighborhoods also? Does that make sense at all?
It certainly does. In fact, that was one of the issues that our external group brought up, is the social livability of some of these neighborhoods. You know, even if you look at narrower driveways, well, you know, where is your child going to play basketball? Department of Ecology looks at really densification of some of the, your housing units so that you can maintain some of your native vegetation for your stormwater management. Well, are you going to promote your six-year-old to go play in the woods, you know, outside of your housing unit? Those are some of the issues that we're kind of grappling with at this point in time, seeing how we can come up with a code that works for both situations.
And does this also apply to infill lots? You know, if somebody wants to build a house on a quarter acre vacant lot here in town, where, you know, they have to bring the house out close to the street and, you know, have minimum-length driveways and all those kind of things?
It would be for new development, any impervious surface that may be created through new development. Steve, do you want to add to that?
So even like a single residence?
To the degree that it would fall under the stormwater permitting requirements, yes. And you've put your finger on one of the things that we're actually very concerned about at the staff level, is the resulting urban form from implementing these new levels of regulations. And one of the points that we keep coming back to over and over again in our conversation, and frankly, we don't have a good answer yet at the staff level, is these guidelines or these regulations really are more intended or work better in a much denser urban area than what Oak Harbor is. And we're trying to figure out, how do we meet our state mandated permit requirements, yet still retain a code that will yield a product that seems to fit our community? And we're struggling with that, to be honest with you. So hopefully, we'll come up with some good ways of making that work. Now, an important point is that no one solution will work in every situation. And so obviously, LID, which relies an awful lot on infiltration of the stormwater, is going to be really driven by what the soil conditions are. And so as the engineers go through their analysis, if the soil conditions don't support a particular drainage solution, then that's just not going to be possible. And so it really is a palette of choices, and so maybe that infill lot that you've referenced is in a situation where that soil can't possibly support infiltration and rain gardens and all these other tools, and so they'll have to continue to go down their list, and sort of the last choice. And sort of the last choice is the, is the system that we're accustomed to today. But in instances where the soils will support that, then that earlier choice on that list will be the one that they'll have to present to the city. And so that flexibility is something that I think that Ecology is touting, that, look, it is not a one-size-fits-all. We have, again, some concerns and we're trying to figure out how we're going to balance all of these things in our code.
Well, Steve, also affordability and maintaining it down the road, those type of issues, are they taken into consideration?
I can't say that that is a primary factor in the conversation at the Department of Ecology. It certainly is a major factor of conversation at the staff level. Because when, when Dennis talks about the internal group, I mean, the folks that we brought into the room or that he and Brad brought into the room, that take care of our streets, you know, take care of our stormwater system, they understand what level of maintenance is necessary today with the systems that they have and how much work that is. When you talk about the types of things that are here, there's a significant more, significant amount of work that needs to be done in order to make that take place. Is that going to be the responsibility of the city or is it going to be the responsibility of the HOA? And, you know, right now, we have kind of a shared responsibility. Some of that is taken care by the HOA, some is taken care by the city. If a lot of these facilities take place within the right-of-way, how are we going to split that up? Regardless, it's going to cost more, whether that cost is, is borne by the homeowners association or that cost is borne by the utility, there, there will be increased maintenance costs because the system itself will be more complex. So there's no way for us to get around that. And frankly, one of the points that we're also really coming to grips with is that there will be a lot of this that we just frankly will not know until we get more of a track record in terms of taking care of it. Usually when we write a code for you and the council, we like to think that we've been able to think through all of the problems and have solutions for those. We are freely admitting that we'll cover most of that, but there'll be a part of this that we will have to learn after the code is in place. And we're not altogether comfortable with that approach.
Dennis, you said the code had to be in place by the end of the year. Is it specifically December 31st or is there a set timeframe that that has to be completed?
December 31st, 2016.
And I'm assuming there are other Phase II jurisdictions that are going through the same challenges we are with this?
There are.
Can you list like a comparable city or another Phase II jurisdiction?
Well, I think actually Mount Vernon is one that is working with this, but I saw a draft of their proposed amendment and they are basically, I don't know if you've seen this, Steve, but they are adopting the 2012 manual and all the requirements within pretty much that way and not going into the detail of their code to amend. They're just prescribing the 2012 manual as the guiding document.
And that'll be the new set standard?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just appreciate that you guys are not doing that, kind of taking some time to evaluate how it fits in. The one, two questions that I had, it talked so much about streets and sidewalks and, you know, coming off of the Transportation Improvement Plan, thinking about widening some of our sidewalks, now it feels like those are instantly at conflict with some of those plans for improvement that we had in certain areas. So hopefully, we can strike a nice balance and blend those together.
And I think that's where it will take in a lot of, a lot of cases will be that balancing act.
And as far as the enforcement, I mean, you brought that up. That was something initially I thought, you know, is DOE going to come in and are they going to review the code to see if it's sufficient? Are they going to test certain projects that we implement going forward? Do we know any of those answers?
Well, I think we do have a requirement that they have an opportunity to review our code. I don't know how far after we adopted a set of codes will they come back in and review the implementation and effectiveness of those codes.
We are actually subject to, presently under the permit, we're subject to an audit, not annually, but maybe every two or three years. But we also have a reporting requirement every year, so there's a whole list of things that we haven't talked to you about that really aren't code-related, that we have to report to the Department of Ecology every year in terms of our maintenance operations, the number of, of problems that we've had, if, if we know that we've had some illicit discharges into the storm drain system, there's a whole slew of things. And so it's pretty easy for us to imagine that the next time there's an audit, they will be looking to see, how have we done in implementing the low-impact development techniques that we've had to put into our code? But Dennis is absolutely correct. We'll need to provide them this and they will likely comment on whether they believe that we've gone far enough in meeting our permit requirements.
Is there any ramifications if we don't get it done on time or if we submit it at deadline and they come back and say it's not sufficient, then what would happen?
I don't have a specific response for that. However, there's been a lot of that type of back and forth discussion through shoreline master programs where Ecology is the reviewing agency for those. They come back with comments, they go through the, the local jurisdiction process, back to Ecology, that type of thing. However, if we get into that phase, I'm sure we would still be, and I'm assuming, compliant with the 2016 deadline.
We'll be better off to meet the deadline and, and get engaged in a conversation with them than we would be to not meet the deadline. And we also know that there are third parties out there who follow this topic with a high degree of interest, typically more in the King County area, but that's, doesn't mean that, that they don't pay attention to our locale either. In fact, we've had contact from one of those groups wanting to know the status of, of us on this project. So it is something that environmental groups follow. And so that's why Dennis and Brad's focus is getting us done by the end of the year.
Thank you for, the word or the name of the city that was on the tip of my tongue in thought was King County because as maybe you probably do know, but they're taking and buying up four properties that are residential and they're now allowing developers to build multifamily units on those properties with no on-site parking. So they're, you know, just trying to drive away the cars, but they do have a transportation system that we don't have. Some of the questions I had with the tool package, the previous materials used for parking, whether it be driveways or parking lots, all of that. We have a, a problem here on the island because so much of our soil, you know, three or four inches below is clay and it just does not drain. So that's going to cause somewhat of an issue. But also the maintenance, you know, and if you've got trees in neighborhoods or forests around you, you're going to have the moss problem and that's just a constant maintenance problem. And I would think that maintenance would have to play some role with going forward with this, or do they even care?
I don't think Ecology is really, really placed to focus on that aspect, but we as a local jurisdiction have to because it equates in the dollars essentially. So that, that is, as Steve mentioned, a big issue that we've been grappling with.
Well, Stephen, like you're talking about the soils, you know, and not to disturb the native soils. Well, I don't, when you're starting to build a, when you're going to develop a, a large project or even a, a medium-sized project and it's, it's been a forested area, you know, you still have to move equipment in there, you still have to get the equipment in to do the infrastructure and infrastructure is the biggest driver of moving the soil to start with. And just a lot of it, it just seems, there's no thought into some of this stuff, especially from the maintenance side of it, because the maintenance will be, there's a large cost to the developer. But after the fact, developer's gone, then there's a large cost to the HOA or the city, whoever that responsible party might be, has to maintain that. And like you, you were saying, Jess, the sidewalks, I mean, that would apply. And the mere fact that, you know, King County has no problem with putting a building, you know, you know, two feet behind the sidewalk and no parking and no landscaping is just high-rises. It's almost kind of sad.
Well, there's an educational component to, to a private landowner who has a rain garden, who has never had a rain garden before, how do they maintain it? You know, there's an education piece too that somebody will have to engage in.
So I, I think, you know, commission's had, raised a number of good questions, good comments, ones that we've had internally as well. I think probably in summary, I'll say that we're trying to strike a balance. We're, obviously, we have to meet our permit requirements, but we're trying to figure out, how do we make this best work for Oak Harbor? And it remains to be seen what that draft looks like, but we will get one in front of you as soon as we can and start to have a more focused, detailed conversation about how we take the things that Ecology wants us to consider and put them into play in our community.
Dennis, excuse me, have we, we're, are we presently operating under the 2005 stormwater management? Is that what we're working with now?
Yes.
Is there plans to adopt the 2012?
Yes, I think we are obligated to do that at the end of the year as well.
We, we have to.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep.
I'm curious, we've got builders, we've got people in the real estate here. I'm curious, what does this kind of ruling, for lack of a better word, what is this going to, what do you think it's going to do to builders? And we're looking to bring people in because of the Navy to be able to live here. Are people going to shy away? Are they, what, what's going to happen overall, do you think, with, with this kind of regulation?
Well, my first response is it's, it's going to add cost. It's going to add cost to, to structure itself and that's going to be the primary issue, which raises the point of affordability, you know? So there's a conflict there. But I think that's one thing. And then Steve mentioned form and design, you know, what is a future subdivision going to look like with the implementation of low-impact development? So...
It adds complexity to the process on, on both sides, both for the private sector because the private sector consulting engineers have to be up to speed on this. They have to think about their site design in a different fashion. On the public sector side, it will mean that we spend more time focused on the stormwater review, which I think right now is probably the, the biggest percentage of our time right now anyway, under the 2005 rules. When we go to the 2012 rules, I think that, that will increase. So I think one of the biggest effects will be an increase in complexity. The semi-silver lining here, I think, is that we, we are, right now, are not experiencing, you know, three or four or five subdivisions every couple of months, right? We're, we're still coming out of that time period where the building community is using the existing lots. We do have a couple of subdivisions that, one that's in process. And so we will get a chance to really work, I think, with those first couple of applicants on a, on a focus level to, to collectively figure out, how do we meet these new rules? And so that's the, the one semi-bright spot that I see is that, at least if the, if the workload continues the way that it is, we won't be completely inundated with subdivisions at the same time we're trying to figure out how to make all of these things work. So hopefully, we will get some, some lessons in there. And the other thing that I think that, that we've been trying to be part of is, is a broader community statewide conversation. When staff members from the city are at these trainings, I know that they typically raise these questions with the Department of Ecology representatives. Sometimes they, you know, those folks will acknowledge that there are some things that still have to be resolved. And so we'll continue to raise those conversations, whether it's at a training session that we're at or whether it's when we're in Olympia with our legislative officials, to say that this solution is not going to be one that works well for Oak Harbor and there are other communities in that same boat. So we're continuing to try to, to bring some, to come back to the word balance, bring some balance to this overall situation.
Well, Dennis, with this, on December 31st, when this goes into play, the city must do, from a public property standpoint, follow those guidelines that they're established, right?
Yes.
You don't have any choice as a municipality.
We don't.
But there's some conversation room for the developers.
Not necessarily. The, the, they'll still be required to meet the, to meet the standards in the 2012 manual and whatever standards we have in place in our code. What we're trying to find, Dennis and, and Brad Gluther are trying to find, are those areas where the state has allowed us some flexibility on local choice and how can we, how can we maintain as much flexibility as possible for our community? Those are the areas that we're really trying to explore right now. But the reality is, is that, is that since we are a Phase II permit city and we're responsible for what gets into the harbor, everything that's upstream from there, we're also responsible for. And so that's why we have to make folks like Mr. Gentry and, and his colleagues follow that same manual because the state has told us that we have to do that. The question really is going to come down to what flexibility do we have in some of these things? And then, as I said before, the site-specific conditions. If the site won't support LID in any fashion, then we'll be able to retreat to the systems that we use right now.
Well, I know I've seen these type of programs put in place. One case in particular, like City of Irvine in California, it was a planned city. So every aspect of it was, was, was planned out with a lot of these things in mind and built that way. But in a lot of areas, we don't even have storm drains, you know? The water just runs. And so you're, you're having to do like a Seventh Street Improvement Plan that's, that's funded in the transportation plan, but yet the stuff is just going to run off to the sideline or the side properties which the city doesn't own. So how do we build our infrastructure through properties that we have no jurisdiction over because they're not being developed?
So that's, that's an example where that project itself would have to be compliant with the 2012 manual and compliant with our code in terms of, how do we address that? It's always tricky when we, when we put new, a new thing, whatever that thing is, in the midst of a bunch of old stuff, right? And that's true today.
Yeah.
It will be probably a little trickier when, when these rules are in place. But we'll follow those rules within the corridor of that project and the discharge from that will have to be handled in whatever way is most appropriate as it enters that older non-compliance system. I can tell this will be your favorite topic for the, for the next several months, yeah. Big smiles up there right now.
Steve, can you, who's, the Department of Ecology, who do they answer to?
Primarily to the governor.
Okay, so...
And the state legislature to the degree that the legislature...
So if we have a voice as a citizen, how does this stuff happen and just somebody comes up with this?
Well, this is actually implementing the Clean Water Act at the, at the federal level, right? And so the, you know, the federal government passed the Clean Water Act and, and then EPA says you have to meet certain standards. I, I think Ecology is relatively proud of the fact that, that they negotiated the most stringent permit conditions in the United States. And so we far exceed, my understanding is we far exceed the, the basic requirements. And so different states may not have, will not have the same level that we have here. Obviously, the goal is, is primarily to keep the Puget Sound clean and, and to make it better than it is right now. And it, it works on, on the theory that we make small incremental changes everywhere and those small changes add up to big positive changes.
Sometimes they don't seem so small, though.
No, they don't. And, and, and when they, when we look at it on a permit-by-permit basis or a project-by-project basis, if I, if you allow me to get on my soapbox for just one moment, the local government is, is stuck being the enforcement arm for the state government.
Sure.
And it's folks like Dennis or, or CAC or Ray or, or Brad who are left explaining to our citizens, our builders, our developers, why they have to follow this particular rule. And it's not one that the citizens of Oak Harbor said we should put into place, they're ones that a state agency has told us we have to put into place. And so in the very real sense, the buck stops here when we're talking about these kinds of rules. If we're done with that item, if, if you'll allow me one item that's not on your agenda, Mr., Mr. Wassinger, Chair?
Yes, of course.
One, one item, one additional item.
One additional item. As we mentioned in the pre-meeting, but I, but I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity, when we have the cameras turned on, to acknowledge that Kathy Gifford, who has been with the city 20 years now, has decided that she'd rather spend her time with her grandchildren than with us.
Smart way.
I'm not, frankly, I'm not sure how she came to that conclusion, but nevertheless, it's the conclusion that she has reached. She's been with, with our department for 16 years, and she has allowed me to sit outside of her desk for 15 of those 16 years. And so without Kathy's support and hard work, the successes that we've had as a department would not have been possible. And I think the Planning Commission will probably agree with me that the success that you've had and, and the fine meetings that you've had over these years are directly related to Kathy's work.
Absolutely, definitely.
Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I'm done.
Steve knows how quickly I dropped the gavel at the end.
Yeah.
No further business, our meeting's adjourned.